Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, April 6th, 2016 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Errington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I would that, before we go into our moment of silent meditation, we remember all those in our community that are less fortunate than we are. We remember those who have lost loved ones in this community since the last time we were in these chambers, and also ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, March 16th, 2016, and bills for payment on April 1st and 8th, 2016. Mrs. Errington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Okay, citizens to be heard, our first citizen to be heard today is Mr. Randy Barnes. Oh, sorry. I was remiss, any repository sales? Any repository sales? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizens to be heard, Mr. Randy Barnes.
Thank you, Council President, Council members, staff, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, and my subject today is $81,732 contract employees. And that $81,000, that represents retired Mr. Clem's pension, plus the $12,000 a year that four council people decided to give him a year and a half ago. My concern is, right now, that contract's coming to an end in about three months, and we haven't really heard a whole lot of progress on the things Mr. Clem was going to do. So I can picture where these three council people that voted for this last time, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Jones, all they have to do is convince the newest council person to vote yes, and they can extend this contract another two years. Because, again, we heard Mr. Clem say that the archiving was going to be done the end of last year. But the other part of his job that council thought they had to have him for and give him $1,000 a month was to train the new clerk. Yet, in this year and a half, we've heard no progress on training the new clerk. So it's just a natural thing that if we haven't trained the new clerk, Mr. Clem hasn't been able to spend enough time for $1,000 a month to train the new clerk, why wouldn't council just go ahead and extend that contract another two years? Because, again, I listen to every council meeting, I listen at the end, no one's commented that Mr. Clem is doing a great job training the new clerk. So, you know, with a new mayor coming on another year, and the clerk not being trained, I can picture these three council people, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski, and Mr. Jones, putting this back on the agenda in June and trying to convince the newest member of council to vote yes. Because council can't function without this man, apparently. At least, that's what four council people thought a year and a half ago. And I don't know what's changed, other than the records are archived. Remember, he called Prilo Enterprises, said, "Archive the records for us." So, the concern is, you know, I wasn't able to, the citizens weren't able to stop this a year and a half ago, this giveaway program of giving a retiree with a maximum pension ever in the city, $1,000 a month for doing, archiving the records and training the new clerk. That just sailed right through a year and a half ago. But I'm here to say, let's stop the insanity. Don't try to extend this contract another time. It was ridiculous the first time a year and a half ago to take $1,000 every month of the taxpayers' money and give it to this retired person that earned a pension after 47 years, where most of those years made more than the mayor did, and left his job without training the incoming clerk. So council, the four people in their infinite wisdom, said, "Well, we have to have this man here, because we, city cannot function without Mr. James Clem here, training the new clerk and archiving the records and holding our hands." Because even though we were elected as council people to do a job, we couldn't do our job without Mr. Clem being here. So these three council people that are set in front of me today, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski, and Mr. Jones, says, "We can't do our job. We have to give this man $1,000 a month to come down and hold our hand. Train the new clerk and archive the records." Well, he's still holding your hand. We know the records have been archived, but the new clerk hasn't been trained. And I think, after a year and a half, two years, the training ought to be done. The training should have been done before Mr. Clem left office. He told us he stayed on a whole extra year because Mr. Winarski asked him to. Stayed on a whole 'nother year, but in that whole year, he couldn't train the new incoming clerk or train the staff in that office to do that job, prepare the agenda. It's a sad state of affairs. I hope every department in this city hall doesn't run like the clerk's office that council is in charge of. So if it is, we would be offering, the fire chief is going out, we'd be offering him a contract, wouldn't we? And if the police chief, when he resigns, we'd be offering him a contract. The person in the zoning office leaves, we'd be offering him a contract. Because you've set the standard. You've set a precedent. You retire, we're going to give you a contract to stay on for a couple of years. I think that's a sad precedent. The precedent should be, if you're going to, you have people in the offices that are trained to do those jobs and step up into those jobs. That's what we would do in the real business world, where money is an object. See, down here, it's like money's no object, right? Well, that's not the case. We know that, we know money is an object. But yet, there's money in the council's budget to pay this man for another two years. You put money in the budget so you could pay Mr. Clem for another two years when you renew this contract in July. Well, I'm going to be here from now until July, saying that, "Stop the insanity, don't renew that contract again."
Thank you for your time. Up next is, on our citizens to be heard, Ms. Amy Comptor. I don't see Amy. Okay, we'll move on from there. I do want to make the citizens aware that we do have a public hearing at 9:30. I see a lot of citizens to be heard here. So what we'll do is, we'll continue on with citizens to be heard until 9:30. At that time, we'll have to recess from the meeting for the public hearing, and then go back into session afterwards and continue on with citizens to be heard. So we have about 15 minutes left of citizens to be heard, and then we'll pick that up after the public hearing. Michael Adamus.
Thank you, good morning. I'm Michael Adamus, 3518 Station Road in Erie. I am the co-chair of the Erie County Executive's Roundtable on Disability Issues and the Erie Mayor's Roundtable on Disability Issues, co-chair as well. And I'm here today to speak regarding the EMTA and Lyft paratransit issue. Erie's transit service and the accompanying paratransit service is important to a large percentage of the population in our region. People rely on the EMTA and the Lyft to get to work, shopping, and cultural activities, both in the city and in the county. Because of it, they can pursue higher education, from Mercyhurst Northeast to my alma mater, Edinburgh University. Most importantly, it is necessary for their survival. The EMTA, and especially the Lyft, are the primary methods to get many with disabilities, especially mobility disabilities, to medical appointments and life-extending treatments such as dialysis. These statements are not meant to support one side over the other. Instead, they are meant to point out who will suffer if this issue is not resolved. We cannot allow the already marginalized of our population to suffer additional strife and serious life-threatening harm at the loss of our transit system, which we rely on. As the city council and county council negotiate their issues, remember the constituents you serve and the oath you took to support and protect us all. As a final thought, I would like to invite both the city council and the county council to select a member to join our roundtables. The purpose of the roundtables is to serve as an advisory body to the mayor of Erie and the Erie County Executive. If a member of the respective councils attended as well, these issues could be better explained and crises like this avoided. I will be happy to answer any questions, now or at any time. Thank you, and I'm submitting a copy for your records. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. And Michael, if you could leave your contact information with the clerk's office in there so that somebody could get in touch with you about your offer for, it's on there?
Sure, I'll write it down.
Perfect, thank you so much. Our next citizen to be heard, Pasol Halminski. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
It's that Polish background, you know?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. I'm speaking as the chair of the Elevating Disabled for Erie County. I'm also a member of the Erie County Roundtable for People's Disabilities and a mayor's Roundtable for People's Disabilities, chairing his Transportation, Mobility, and Accessibility Committee. I won't bore you with the state committees I'm on or national committees I work on, but please, I'm here for your resource. And again, I'm going to reiterate, when Michael said, "I'm not taking sides," I'm just kind of state facts that haven't been out in the open yet. And I'm also going to address the article in Erie Times News this past Monday. Number one, EMTA has an annual fund, operating fund of $18 million, as you know. If the charter is not renewed, there is potential loss of $9 million from PENDOT and $4 million loss from FTA, which stands for the Federal Transit Administration. Number three, if the charter is not renewed and EMTA no longer exists, the FTA will not recognize nor fund a newly established transit agency. The existing charter must be renewed now to prevent FTA from holding back funds. Failure to resolve these issues jeopardizes urban and rural services. The Lyft and Paratransit Service and Medical Transportation Program, MA, operate under the EMTA umbrella, which will directly affect and possible cease operation without the charter extension. After September 14th, the charter will expire. Funds for EMTA and Lyft will cease. The current charter needs to be approved to prevent any potential disruption or end to transit services. What you may not know is that our Uber service and our taxi service is not accessible for people who have to use wheelchairs. They have no other option but taking the paratransit, the Lyft in Erie, in Erie County. What you don't also know is Gertrude Barber Center uses paratransit, and so does Sarah Reed Children's. This current year, OVR, the Office of Occasional Realization, is starting Project Search, and it's mandated under the new WIOA, which stands for Workforce Investment Act, federal act. And they're mandated to spend 15% of their funds to get youth with disabilities into the work field. So they were going to use the paratransit and the bus company to take the youth from Mill Creek School District to jobs and back to the schools. That's the way the new WIOA is written. You are my elected officials, who I look up to and look to protect the above services I just mentioned, to help us, people with disabilities like me and like other people you see in our audience here. We need your assistance to help us to keep our jobs, to go to chemotherapy, to go to dialysis, medical appointments, to go to school, et cetera. Again, I'm here to help, I'm not taking sides. Any questions? My contact information is up here, and I'm supposed to give it to the clerk's office, correct?
Yeah, you can, oh, there you go.
Thank you for your time and help in this matter.
Thank you. Our next citizen to be heard, Jessica Molzen.
Good morning. Jessica Molzen, 1545 Fairmont Parkway. I too would like to speak on the transportation charter renewal issue. Erie's transportation system provides vital service essential to our community. Many citizens of the city of Erie and Erie County are 100% dependent upon public transportation to maintain their ability to live independently and to contribute financially to the community by maintaining their employment. Without available transportation to maintain employment, fewer citizens of the city and county of Erie will be paying taxes, and those citizens who are homeowners will be unable to afford property taxes. Many Erie citizens spend money on public transportation every day to achieve their activities in daily living, such as shopping for groceries, traveling to pharmacies for life-sustaining medication, and attending entertainment events that bring revenue into both the city of Erie and Erie County. As the city and county negotiate a new transportation charter agreement, I encourage you as representatives of all Erie residents to spend one week accomplishing every activity of your daily life that involves your ability to travel by utilizing Erie's public transportation system. This is what numerous city and county residents must do 365 days out of the year. It's my hope that after you have this experience, you will better understand how vital it is for members of county and city government to stop viewing the transportation charter issue as an issue of power and control, and realize how the lack of transportation charter will negatively affect the citizens of both the city of Erie and Erie County, as well as the economic stability of both the city of Erie and Erie County. It is my hope that you will work together to develop and implement a new transportation charter agreement before the current agreement expires in September. I have one final recommendation. As an advocacy specialist for a disability rights organization that serves 459 Erie County residents, in addition to residents with disabilities in multiple other counties, and as a citizen of Erie who utilizes public transportation, I encourage you to consider appointing an equal number of representatives of the city and the county to the EMTA board and to appoint an additional position to the board, to a citizen who utilizes public transportation as their primary method of travel, so that they can offer their insight on transportation issues affecting the citizens of the city of Erie and Erie County. Filling the transportation needs of the citizens you have been elected to serve is not a matter of power and control. Access to public transportation is a matter of survival. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roby, do we have time for one more?
Yes.
Okay. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard?
Yeah, you can, just anyone can come up at this time. Where?
Oh, the list in the back. I have, I meant on the agenda, I'm sorry, I apologize. No, no, it's fine.
This is Mr. Mucy. I live at Friendship Towers. And I mentioned to Kastakowski a while back, to see if they could put a ramp, a handicap ramp in, put a handicap on Tenth and French at the Y, because there ain't no handicap ramp in over there for the wheelchairs, so the wheelchairs can get in there. I did mention to Lori to ask Mr. Witherspoon, because Mr. Witherspoon might know some of them over there, to see if they could put a handicap in, ramp in, on Tenth and Peach here at the Y. I mean, I go to the Y over there on 300 State Street. I mean, I'm not thinking for myself, I'm thinking for other, because there was a couple guys that live at Friendship Towers, that's got power chairs or scooters, and they can, and they wanted to get into the Y, because they have a hot sauna, they can relax here and that, and they don't have one at 300 State Street. And another thing I want to mention, I talked to, on city council, because you were out of town, Cass, that Andre Horton, it's on county council, that if county council takes over the transit authority, and they, and, because I heard one of the bus drivers said that they're going to raise, keep raising the bus fare up. Now, if they raise their prices up on the city bus fare, then the Lyft's going to raise their prices up. And if they do that, which I got paid to go to the grocery store, because I paid $2.70, if they get another raise, and it costs me $6 round trip, they go to the grocery store. So if, if the transit authority raises their prices up, then the Lyft's going to raise their prices up, because they're in the same building over there and that. And if they do that, I might as well take the free ride, because they have a bus come for Giant Eagle. So I'll probably have to take the free ride to Giant Eagle if they keep raising the prices up. So, because I ride the Lyft in the winter months, because it'd be too cold to sit and wait for a city bus. And if you get two inches of snow on the ground, my wheelchair doesn't go very good in two inches of snow on the ground. So that's what I'm, what I mentioned it to, but it, but Andre Horton said, "Well, the cost, because of the cost and that, that they keep raising the prices up." Well, why don't they go to electric buses? So if they want to save on gas, you know, because I, I thought gas was coming down, or diesel fuel must be coming down. So if diesel fuel comes down, then they raise the prices up on bus fare and that. The last, now, they had an excuse when they got a raise, they had to raise the funding, the bus fare up, because of the gas prices were going out, outrageous. Now the gas is coming down, and they want to raise bus fare up. So I heard one of the bus drivers, in September, the bus fare's going up again. So that means if bus fare goes up again, the Lyft's going to raise their prices up. So I, and I have to take the free ride to Giant Eagle, that's all I have to do, because the Lyft's going to raise their prices up, and it costs me $6 round trip to go to jobs. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. At this point, we're going to take a pause here, and we're going to start our public hearing, it's under Old Business, for a PLCB liquor license transfer. Good morning.
My name's Craig Zona, my address, my business address is 150 East 8th Street, Erie, PA. I have with me today Tim Sedney, who is one of the owners of Lakefront Realty that is seeking this action, which is the transfer and relocation of a PLCB liquor license from Springborough Township, or Springfield Township, to the city of Erie. We believe this is a good idea, because it's an investment in the infrastructure of the city. Mr. Sedney and his family have been involved in businesses on the waterfront for, what, 50 years? Better part of 50 years. And the vast majority of the businesses he owns are located on the waterfront. This will certainly beautify the east pier, create some jobs, and hopefully attract more tourism. I'll take any questions.
Do you have any, oh, I guess it's just a liquor, you don't need pictures or anything. So, yeah, does any council people have any questions? Any council members have any questions? This is for that floating pier, right?
Correct.
Okay. And you're going to put a drinking establishment on?
Restaurant.
Okay, restaurant that serves alcohol.
Correct.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you. What is the exact location again? Where is that?
On the eastern pier, you go down off the dock to the east, you know, Rum Runners, yeah, Rum Runners would be the last building. This would be, like, two lots in.
Okay.
So right on the eastern pier.
Well, was that where, was that where the boat company?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, council?
Is the restaurant on the barge too? The whole operation?
Most of the operation is on the barge. We will have a patio out in front that will be landside, and the barge would be attached with a gangplank back to the patio.
What do you envision for, like, employment and also the size of the number of people that could be there?
We will have seating for about 115 people. And as far as employment, we're 20 to 25 people.
Yeah, I like the idea, because I think, you know, it brings a little bit of the big city here. And I've seen, I've seen in other cities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Jones. Is there a timeframe? Or what's the timeframe?
We are hoping to open sometime in June. The first barge has been completed, and the second barge, they just started construction on it yesterday. Takes about three weeks to build that barge.
Right.
And then, once they both go in the water, then the superstructure would be built onto it.
Great, thank you. Mr. President.
Mr. Brennan. Is it, it's a seasonal?
Yes, it is a seasonal.
Okay, because of course ice, and I didn't know if there was any way to make it a year round.
Right, it is seasonal.
Mr. President, are you going to use the entire property that the former boat operation was there?
The actual piece of property that we are on is 12 East Dobbins Landing, and that is actually water that is there. There's a very small section of land that is out in front. There's two parcels, one to the east, one to the west, that actually housed that boat operation. And one section has been taken down and turned into a parking lot, where we added about 30 spaces. And then there's about an additional 18 spaces right in front of that water lot.
That was my next question, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
One more, Bob. The barge, is that subject to, like, safety issues too, right?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, yes. The barge itself and the patio will be fully fenced in, with a fence that's, I believe it's 44 or 45 inches tall. So there will be safety measures put into place.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you have an age limit on the citizens that can come in?
We actually, it's a family-type environment, the same as my Rum Runners Restaurant and my Cove Restaurant is. We will allow, and it's our own policy, it's not a regulation by the PLCB, but we will allow underagers there until 9 o'clock.
Okay.
With a parent. And then, after that, it's 21 and over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Seeing none at this time, we'll have anyone to speak in favor of the project. Anyone in favor of the project that would like to speak? Seeing none, anyone opposed to the project? Seeing none, I think that we're good. So, thank you for your time.
Mr. Mersky, you could vote on it now, if you wish.
Okay. Is council amenable to that?
If you wish, it's your.
Yeah, to voting on it.
Your discretion.
Would anyone like to vote on it today? Anyone? I'm all for it. Okay. So, Rose, are you okay with that?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just real quick, before, I understand, obviously, we're having a public hearing, and we can vote on it now.
Right.
Are there any other, were there any other concerns? Or we just, it was just not a formality?
It was just, it was just a matter, are we okay with them transferring it from whatever township?
From Spring.
Springborough or, to Erie.
Okay, yeah, so this has nothing really to do with anything other, anything else, just the liquor license.
Other than the liquor license transfer.
Correct.
Which I think, I mean, my personal opinion is, I think it's a good thing. I think any development that we have on our waterfront for recreational purposes, entertainment purposes, only enhances that area. Anytime we can bring people downtown and bring people to our waterfront, that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing, and so.
Sure, I just wanted, for sake of clarity, that we're voting.
Yeah, so what we are voting on.
For voting on the liquor license.
We are voting on the transfer of the liquor license from Two Hearts Doing Business as Springside Lounge Restaurant in Springfield Township to Lake First Lodge Doing Business as Woods Backwater Barge Grill on 2 State Street. Ms. Rose? Okay, I guess at this point, we will conclude the public hearing and then go into the vote.
Okay. Sponsored by Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Winarski. The pursuant to the proper legal advertising and a public hearing held today at 9:30. Request for the transfer of PLCB liquor license from Two Hearts, Inc., Doing Business as Springside Lounge and Restaurant of Springfield Township, Erie County, to Lakefront Lounge, L. L.L.C., doing business at Woody's Backwater Barge and Grill, Two State Street, Erie, is hereby approved. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mursky. Uh, this whole resolution is approved by yeas seven, nay zero.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will continue on with our citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard, please come to the microphone. Morning.
My name is McDonald, my property's 19th and Reed. I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking at this, these large sums of money that you're moving around. Jim Thomas said a long time ago that y'all didn't move money around. You're moving around, but you're not explaining nothing. You can get money for everybody, but you can't get money for them centers. Maybe the reason you don't try to get none for them is they, they don't come down here and ask for none. I remember when William was down on the west side of that center down there, he would come down here. I, I don't understand things, y'all just, y'all just spend a lot of money. And, uh, I don't really see nothing you did for the taxpayers. I really don't. You got that park down there, you done put all that money down there and you're still putting more money down there. I don't know, you're gonna, you, I'm not saying you're gonna buck, bankrupt the city, you're bankrupting the taxpayers. I wouldn't mind some of these things you do, but you're not explaining nothing. This is all Greek on here, you don't probably understand it yourself. But I tell you what, it'll come back to haunt you one of these days, because you're not, we're not getting, uh, our money's worth. It's, it's a waste of money. The hell you need with that park down there? You didn't, you didn't make no money on that park up there. Don't nobody hardly ever be up there. Y'all just spend money because you can? Keep on spending it. Keep on. We'll be in worse shape than Detroit after a while. Or Flint. It's a shame, it's a, it's a shame, the way you treat the poor taxpayers. We're the ones that's carrying the freight, but y'all really don't care. You have no compassion. You'd, you'd, you should, you should have town hall meetings and try to explain it to the people, but you don't give a kitty. You don't care. That's too bad. That we come down here and we're pleading with you. But then when hell break loose, oh, we want you to support this. Hey, just let hell be loose, as far as I'm concerned. Y'all, what are you up there for? The only thing I've seen you do is pass things for Joe up there. Joe didn't put you up there, the people's voted for you. It, I don't know, they must be out of their cotton picking head, because their mind have taken leave. To vote for some of y'all up there, you don't have no business up there. You don't do nothing for the people. Oh, I'm on city council, big deal. You're not your own man or your own woman. You're doing what somebody else wants you to do. I want you to go this way, go that way, that ain't worth a damn. Uh-uh. Vote the way you think is best for the people. What? I, I don't know. I don't know, it, it's gonna come back to haunt you, though, I promise you that, because Magnolius said one time, and he might have said it a few times, would come around, go around. What you do to people is coming back on you, but it's gonna be many times more. Y'all should consider the people. GE leaving here. Who's ever grew that agreement up ought to be dug up and reshot again, make a deal like The people that work for GE, and the people across the country, they should boycott GE, boycott their product, the way they treat their people. They have had good people working out there. They get them in debt and then they lay them off. There's no reason for it. And the union that gave everything away, ain't nothing else to give away. Them should be shot, the way they messed over those members.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, yes, sir, I don't know. I tell you what, y'all better get on the ball.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Dan Olson, uh, 527 East 11th Street. Uh, I've never talked here before, uh, even with Occupy and everybody getting on there and then eventually coming to city council, I didn't speak, but I feel I should speak now, and it, it's funny that I'm gonna talk about numbers, because Randy's talking about numbers and what we're talking about numbers. So, you know, no one likes to acknowledge the elephant in the room until he starts squashing people, it seems. So, let me see, the average cost for juvenile confinement is, uh, about $240 a day. Well, Erie, you know, lucky me, there's some, uh, system of confinement or care for people like me, so I had 10 years of that, that's $876,000. I guess the taxpayers paid to keep me alive. All right. So then the system, you know, you know, education and rehabilitation comes along, and then they decide during an election year, unethical judge making unethical decisions, to sentence a man like myself to 24 years as an 18-year-old minor for stealing what amounts to about $10,000 in merchandise, which the state and the taxpayers paid, $42,000 a year for my confinement, which comes to $294,000 the taxpayers paid to discipline and punish me. Then, not discounting the two years in the county, uh, you know, for, for basically speaking up for my rights and getting tased on the streets by the Erie County Police, when they harass people, when they have no reason to, and pull them off of bikes, and steal my bicycle that I've never received back, you know, you know, they could tase me, pull me off my bike, when I get out, I say, where's my bike? They say, that's what you get when you mess with the police. So, that's $74,000. Now, you know, life is life, so I go to college, I get a clinical psychology degree, I get, you know, that's $40,000, a master's degree, that's, now we're up to $60,000, but I can't find work in this town. And I don't believe that's possible. I mean, you got these reentry programs that are supposed to be paving the way for people getting out of jail, but you haven't paved the way for me, for anything. Uh, I've applied everywhere in this town, and there are people, and they are ashamed, and I've talked to them privately, and they know, so it's not like, you know, this is all under the ground. So now you got, uh, Ben Spagan talking about ban the box, and he wants the city council to sing along. Well, unless you're going to do something about the underlying digital oppression that you are applying on poor people with these channels, not allowing them to get out, you could take that off the box all you want, they're still gonna run background checks, and now what you have is people not knowing how or why they're being oppressed. What you need to do is get jobs for people. That's what we need. And, uh, apparently, uh, Randy Bauer says, you guys are good at inventing jobs for people because you got a ex-council person getting paid a thousand dollar a month to do nothing. I, and Ben Spagan says, 40% less income. I wish I got 40% less income. You know what I get? I get offered to work for free for the Mental Health Association. We don't have a job for you, but you can work for free. For, uh, Sonia Arrington, for, for anybody, it's work for free. What is this? I mean, I have a master's degree, at least give me 40% less income of what everyone else in this county is earning with master's degrees. Uh, you know, and that's about all I gotta say about that, because, uh, apparently, uh, this is my first time speaking, but you can look forward to me coming back here every month with a little bit more time to draft up a speech and really start hitting people in the head, because there's a lot of bullshit flying around in Erie.
Please watch your language, it's the rules of council, we have to use...
Okay, all right.
This is a, this is a place of decorum.
Oh, okay, well, there's the decorum, uh, bull crap, what, what, is that better? We're gonna talk about...
I understand you're upset.
Oh, I am upset, and I'm gonna be here, um, you know, next month with a little better, uh, drafted speech, get my speaking skills up, I mean, thank you for the opportunity, and, uh, you know, and if you wanna find me, I'll be behind the courthouse or in front of the courthouse singing kumbaya. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Any other citizens to be heard?
I am so short. Good morning, my name is Diana Eames, I'm the Director of the Pennsylvania Coalition to End Homelessness, and I also work at the Mental Health Association, I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator. Um, I really applaud your efforts, whatever you folks are gonna do in terms of EMTA, in terms of the charter. It's, I have to tell you that it's really critical for my members, um, the bus, I, I don't know what some of those folks would do. Um, it certainly has a lot to do with them finding employment, that is one of the, the most critical. Um, in addition to that, when they go from their homes to the MHA, on, during the day, they use the bus, you all know that. Um, what I'm going to suggest to you, I'm gonna make it short, sweet, and right to the point, which for me is good. Um, what I'm going to suggest and offer to you, um, you all know where the MHA is, do not hesitate to give, um, any of us a call and come down and visit. My members would appreciate it. We've had other elected officials that have come down and spoken about what the members want. Um, and they really do try, I know that the majority of them are in poverty, in a great deal of poverty, but I've had individuals that have come out of poverty. It's a struggle, I, we, my husband and I did it ourselves, I understand it, but when you work with individuals that really try, it makes a difference. So please, take advantage of this opportunity, if you wish, and come down and visit the members. We might even give you lunch.
Mm-hmm. 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 bills, sewer bills, when the water's shut off, me as a landlord, in order to turn that water back on and re-rent that particular piece of property and keep it on the tax rolls and keep monies coming in, I have to pay that bill. So there may be a short period of time that there may be something out there, but at the end of the day, we've been in business for 31 years as a contractor. We have built a lot of projects throughout this community. Jerry Ut Park, we put in the under drains under that field. We put in the bases. We did the excavation. The Library Museum, we excavated for that project. The Erie Insurance Arena, we just did over a million-dollar install of a heating system. The EMTA project, we just installed a heating system there as well. So when you table as last week a contract that may have had some comments made at a bid opening, I understand that there may be some outstanding liabilities, be careful when these comments are made. And I would like to just offer to council a few questions and ask them to look into it. Number one, is it the city of Erie's responsibility to award the most responsible bid that it receives at the bid time? Is there an ordinance pertaining to that order to city council? And if there is, could I please get a copy? Is there an ordinance that states that if there is any money that is owed by any department, sewer, water, et cetera, that you're not allowed to award a contract to that particular person? If there's an ordinance, I would like to get a copy of it. Was this alleged ordinance regarding these outstanding bills put in place? And if it is, I'd like a copy of it. Was there a review of all the other bids that were approved last Wednesday? And if there was, please respond to the rules and regulations pertaining to that.
Thank you for your time. If you have any other questions, you can put them in writing and give them to the clerk, and we'll take care of those for you.
All right. I thank council for its time.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning. Carl Anderson III, 3830 Parade Boulevard in the city of Erie, here today on behalf of Mecca Inc. as their board president in reference to item number eight on your agenda, the resolution extending the use agreement, which is already in place between the city of Erie and our organization, the Mill Creek and Erie County Advocates for the Developmentally Disabled. Primarily, I'm up here this morning in the event that any of you have any questions as to the extension of our agreement to go from a 10-year to 25-year agreement. We are in a unique position to have the opportunity to apply for some state grants, as well as other private and public grant opportunities. For the state grant through the Department of Community Conservation and Natural Resources, any applicant must have either complete ownership or lease control of a property for a minimum of 25 years. So in working with and certainly appreciate the assistance of Doug Mitchell, Jill Beck, and Greg Carley, and the support of Mayor-Senate on the project that we've been working on, we feel we are in a unique position to be able to take advantage of some of these funding opportunities at this time. Our plans are put together and ready to go. This is a project that originally, we entered the agreement in 2010, as you can see from the resolution, and the city has received funding from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources in the past and must become ADA compliant in the park whether our project moves forward or not. The great opportunity for the city in this public-private partnership is that the new project we're bringing forward to the city with the handicap-accessible adaptive baseball field and improvements and handicap accessibility improvements to the park will bring the city in compliance with the compliance that they have to fall into under the money that they received in the past anyway. So this is a win-win for our organization, for the city, for those with handicap issues in our community and the community at large. I have copies of the plan, which of course, we are working with Doug Mitchell, and he has copies of all of those appropriate documents in his office, and we continue to have an open-door policy of working with him. So with that being said, I just ask for your continued support, as many of you have supported this project and continue to support it. We ask for your vote in favor of that. And again, I am in front of you in the event that you have any questions of our organization. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we can't ask questions, so-
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Ordinance is for final passage. Council file number 15948, official ordinance number 10, 2016. An ordinance in accordance with the 2016 city of Erie budget, the sum of $951,000 is appropriated from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for the reallocation thereof in the debt service fund. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that council file ordinance bill number 15948, and now known as official file ordinance number 10, 2016, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council pass official file ordinance number 10, 2016, finally by yeas seven, nay zero. Ordinance is for first reading. Council file number 15949, ordinance appropriating the sum of $461,000 to be received as a burn criminal justice innovation grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for the BCJI Little Italy program. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, that council file ordinance number 15949, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15949 by yeas seven, nay zero, on first reading. New business. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Winarski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that Mr. Lubizaro of 5657 Oldsuk Road, Erie PA, is hereby appointed to the Erie Water Authority, replacing Mr. Richard Driver, whose second term expired. Mr. Lubizaro's term expires December 31st, 2020. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second by Mr. Winarski.
Any separations?
Any separations?
I'd like to separate-
Mr. President. Yes.
I'd like to separate number three in contracts for comment.
The parking authority one? Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, under contracts.
Under contracts, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President.
The Miller Brothers one?
Yes, just for sake of-
Number three, under contracts, and Mr. Oh, are you done? I'm sorry.
And one more, number eight, under, is this old business? I'm sorry, new business for Mecca?
The extended use agreement?
Mm-hmm. Just had a question.
Sure. Any other separations?
Mr. President.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Number one, and number two for comment.
On contracts?
Under contracts.
One and two, okay. Any other separations? Seeing none? We'll vote on the balance of the agenda.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. By Mrs. Arrington, seconded by Mr. Winarski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized to extend the use agreement between Mill Creek-
Oh, Ms. Roby, did we have, oh, no, you're right. I'm sorry, I circled the wrong one. I circled number three under new business. Go ahead. I apologize.
Between Mill Creek and Erie County Advocates for the Development Disabled, Mecca, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation for the use of the seized Francis Hagerty Park, previously entered into on November 22nd, 2013, to extend the term by 25 years until 2041. Such extension shall be contingent upon and effective only upon Mecca procuring state funding to further the project. Mecca shall provide to the city acknowledgement of state approval of grant application. Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, just had a question. Thank you. Just had a question. This is not a question of criticism for Mecca. I mean, they do great work. That's a non-issue. But it says contingent on receiving state funding and some grant stuff. So what does it go back to? What does the lease agreement go back to? If it's not the 25 years, how long will the lease agreement be, just for the sake of question? And then also, is there a timeframe connected to this where the organization would have to receive or procure a state?
It's 10 years, and I believe it's a 30-day cancellation period within that term.
Okay.
So what our intention was, is to make sure that they got the funding first. Once that's in place, then they can get an extension on it. But they're still within the timeframe.
Okay.
And we still can cancel it if necessary. And what we've observed so far is that's certainly not, it's been unnecessary for people to look into that type of action by us.
Sure. No, I was, I just, again, just wanted to know what the default, because there were questions on contingent too, so it goes back to the 10-year.
Yes, we're going to stay within the original terms, and they will be unaltered.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. This resolution adopts yeas seven, nay zero. By Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Three Rivers Fire Equipment, 1319 Airbreak Avenue, Turtle Creek, PA, for 20 global thermal jackets and pants for the Bureau of Fire of the city of Erie at a total cost of $45,842.87. Discussion?
Discussion.
Just a question. Did any one administration or council have the opportunity of checking to see if they owe us any money, any money at all? Do they owe us anything? Anyone check?
For which one?
Are we talking number one, correct? Under contract?
Right.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Yes.
I may be going out on a limb here, but I would presume they have not, because that hasn't been the procedure to check into such things.
I'm very part of it. I'm sorry.
You're sorry?
He wants you to repeat a little louder. He didn't hear you.
Oh, I would presume they have not checked into what you're asking. In other words, do those folks owe us money as part of this? I would presume not.
Okay. And the reason I brought this up, it came out at our last meeting, that all contracts awarded or to be awarded, the background should be checked to make sure that they don't owe us anything, whether they're out of town, in town. That's my concern. Mr. President? Okay. My guts say I want to pull this until that's checked out. But again, for the purpose, the fire department, they may need it, so I'll let this one run by. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
I guess partially, Mr. Witherspoon and I are somewhat on the same plane or general train of thought. I just kind of pulled out number three as a point of conversation around contracts in general. I think it's extremely important that we do a little bit, at times more, checking into some of the contracts that we're awarding. I mean, I think the contract sometimes to, like, purchase services is one thing, but contracts to provide service to the city, whether it be contracting or curd cuts or whatever it might be, we definitely need to look more closely into. And I think the question on the tabled contract last meeting has nothing to do particularly for me with that individual or that particular contract, but it made me begin to think that we have to be a little bit more cautious and aware of the awarding of contracts if we have certain things on the books. For example, if you owe money to the city for some reason, and it's verifiable that you're just simply not paying, or you're being obstructionist. We saw a lot of that in the last couple of years around the sewer bills and water bills, et cetera, with garbage bills, thank you. So I think most of us on council that kind of lived through that, whether in the controller's office or on the council, are a little more heightened awareness to making sure that contracts and expectations of contracts should be fulfilled. So again, if it's minority participation, if it's not owing money, if it's being the lowest responsible bidder, what does that mean? I mean, we've had a lot of contract issues lately in the city with Anna Shelter versus Humane Society, like, all this stuff. And I think we deal with the crisis of the moment when it comes to systematic problems in the city with contracts, but then, when the crisis is over, we just kind of go back to business as usual. And I kind of want, personally, want to kind of keep the question alive of, are we doing things in a procedural or process-appropriate way? Because if we're going to hold any individual or business or entity to fulfilling all of our regulations, then we have to hold all of them accountable to our regulations. So whether it's owing money because of something or whether it's meeting, you know, women-owned business criteria to get an additional grant or minority-owned business to get a contract awarded. So I separated that number three just for the sake of having this conversation, and I personally would like to work with the mayor's office or the administration to look a little bit more closely at some of the nuances before they end up on our agenda, you know, for a vote. So that was kind of just my point that I wanted to make, and I just figured I'd make it now as we're having this conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Mr. Kwiatowski.
Yes, since I seem to be the lightning rod indirectly, I want to tell you the genesis of how this came up last week. So no one here thinks that, and I explained to Mr. Crenshaw, I have nothing against Mr. Crenshaw. In fact, I'm always pushing for him to get more contracts. It wasn't I who discovered the problem, and it wasn't the controller's office who discovered the problem. It was a member of the administration that pointed out to a councilman who happened to be in the area at the time, which is myself. Now, I cannot openly hear a comment like that, knowing what council had put on the table a few weeks before that. I wanted to know the progress of that resolution, which I wasn't aware that there was an answer, okay? Whether it's illegal or not, that's to be determined in courts if we pursue this. But when it was brought to my attention that there were funds owed, this was no different than how we approached the garbage situation. And I had, like I said, no intent. Now, we have a mechanism, Mr. Jones, that could work, and it was lacking even when I was controller. The inability of certain people in the administration to notify the controller's office of when the bids are being opened. Also, if we need to encumber her office with more resolutions, which we can, such as she must have the, you know, we must have, when the contract comes down, which I agree with Mr. Witherspoon, there should be a disclaimer on there that they have been checked out by someone. We don't know that. We are not here full-time. That's why we hire the people when we do the budget. That's why we expect the administration to give us proper information. If that's not coming, we don't know that. We can't, we don't have the staff here to check out every contract. That's why we have Sid. That's why we have other people around here. So, you know, I think if they coordinate properly with the controller's office, and I'm not speaking for her, I think we have the ability to solve a lot of these problems. I'm not going to apologize for what I did last week. I'm going to say I just merely brought to the attention of council, because I openly heard it by a member of the administration. I didn't go looking for the contract. I wasn't there at the bid opening. I just happened to be in the office. So, you know, to Mr. Crenshaw, I explained them before the meeting. But, you know, knowing what our intent was when we discussed that resolution, I just wanted to know what was happening. And I too agree with Mel and Mr. Witherspoon. Yeah, we should have these contracts guaranteed that if there is an issue, and I said to Mr. Crenshaw, we should be made aware of the circumstances. And there may be circumstances. If he's current and he's making every attempt, it's not my intent to punish him. But if we got openly citizens out there that are getting rewarded for contracts that are not paying their bills, no, we shouldn't reward them. And if it takes a court fight to prove it, that's why we got attorneys, and that's why we got Mr. Carley's office. So that's my comment. But, you know, to Mr. Crenshaw, I did talk to him before the meeting, and whatever council wants to decide, I'll be for it.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just, again, it wasn't, not to go back and forth, it wasn't so much just that last contract, like I said. I know it seems like it because it's the situation and whatever. But it's the bigger issue of a systematic problem where things slip through the cracks until it gets to us. And I'm not saying it's always this department and always that department. I'm saying it's a myriad of things that are in the process that are faulty. And then when contracts get to us, or things, objects get to us, or items get to us for a vote, if we ask a question and then we get the response, well, I don't know, or we're not sure, or we got to check into that, well, we got to vote in 15 minutes. You know what I mean? And so sometimes we do get narratives and things like, but we still have questions, and often we get them the day before, you know, respectfully. So I just, for me, again, it was more of a process issue, and it goes back to not just this issue with Mr. Crenshaw, or, I shouldn't point him out, but that contract, but obviously Mr. Crenshaw's business. But this goes back to the last few years where things have been coming up with council. And then again, we have a big pitch of fit, I was trying to-
Out of line.
Decorum in the chambers. Gavel me. We pitch a fit often about the crisis in the moment, but then we don't do any resolution around it. We had big issues around contract issues and the mayor vetoing, and then I, but we haven't changed process yet. And so we'll have another issue that comes up, and then we'll be fighting about that, but we won't change process. And I just want to bring the question up about process until we change it for the better.
Mr. Jones, if I may, here's what I'd like to propose. I'd like to propose you and the liaison to purch- I'd like to propose you and the liaison to purchasing, to sit down with the administration, and maybe we can tighten up some of these procedures, or find those gaps, and the Controller's more than welcome to be a part of those discussions. And, you know, I think it's more, I think what we have on paper, sometimes, you know, how it's, is good, and then how it's executed, maybe not so good. So we need to work on tightening those things. If you'd be willing to, to do that with the liaison to purchasing, I'd be amenable to that.
You okay with that, Mr. Jones?
Okay. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to call for the question.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It, it seems that I pulled out number two, the contract, and Councilman Kwiatowski and Councilman Jones kind of took the lead on just about everything I was concerned about. But I'd like to say one more thing about all contracts. All contracts with, I don't know if there's a limitation, I'll just throw out 50,000, 100,000 to contractors. There is a federal guideline of minority participation, and there have been many, many contracts awarded that there isn't minority participation. There were contracts awarded that said they were going to have 15% minority participation. In my understanding, that it was changed, and it came up to zero, and they still got the contract. So all contracts, I would like to know, all contracts, when they hit the agenda or before, I want to know if they have the minority participation in there, and that I want to see it. And then we're going to hold them accountable. And if they can't tell me where the minorities are, and when they're going to start, then we should not award them the contract. Federal guidelines. Federal guidelines. Contracts, we're all howling about jobs, well, let's spread the jobs out as equally as possible. You know, you'll have jobs of a higher level, but you surely have labor jobs for those that don't have the degrees. Very important, so, Mr. President, I will be watching all contracts and checking on all contracts, and looking for minority participation. And I guarantee I'll vote no if I don't see it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just one more quick comment.
Mr. Brennan.
Just a quick clarification, so I think what, what you're asking is of Mr. Jones is like a procedure listing, or some type of way to have something on paper so we could actually see that?
We did get that with the, we were provided that when the issue came up with the stray dog license.
Yeah.
So what I think we need to do is make sure that procedures are uniform, because what, what happened, I guess, in this situation, if I'm not mistaken, is some of our contracts, Stan Kevich brought it up, some of them say must be current with your bills, some come down and they don't say that. So we need uniform procedures for moving that forward. Clearly, it's an administrative issue, but we want to work cooperatively with the administration so that everybody's playing on the same play, playing field. I think at the end of the day, there's a couple things. Number one, we want it to be fair. Number two, we want to collect the money that's owed to us, and I, the, I think the will of council is, you shouldn't be getting, we shouldn't be giving away money if you owe us money. I think if you ask any first grader, is that fair, they'll say no. And so we got to just, you know, be fair with things. And at the end of the day, that's really what it's about, is fairness. And so, yeah, that's exactly what we need to do. We need to make sure that the procedures are fair for everyone. And to Mr. Witherspoon's point, if we're not following the guidelines on, on our goals for minorities, we have to look at, why is that happening? And try to take corrective measures so that we can reach those goals.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just one more note, I'm not sure if the water authority or city itself has a program, but they may want to look at a second notice-type program. And that means when a resident is behind two months in their refuge, or for the water authority, two months behind in the water bill, that the landlord will receive a notice automatically. Now, I'm not sure if they have to have software to do that, but that would help the landlords, that would raise a red flag for them to say, I better look into this, because that person's too much, excuse me, too much behind, and therefore, he or she may be skipping out, and the landlord is held responsible. That's a suggestion that we, hopefully we can share with Paul Wojcik, and of course, maybe the administration can attach that to the bills that we sent out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to call for the question. Ms. Rose?
Is that for the balance?
It's just for number one, I believe, because we separated these.
Yes, number one under contract. Roll call, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. This resolution adopts by a seven A zero. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the contract for the 2016 curb ramps one project be awarded to Crenshaw Brothers Construction 1854 East 26th Street in the amount of $158,693.70. Did we already cover that under our last discussion?
I, I think, Mr. President, President Mersky stepped out, so he asked me to step in for a moment. I think all the contracts were separated for process and for conversation of process. And so if we're comfortable, can we vote, we can call the question now on that contract?
Oh.
Can we do two and three at the same time? You even know where they were separated?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I'd like to call the question on, on contract number two, as well as contract number three, for the vote.
Okay. Roll call, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski.
Mr. Obi. I have to abstain on number three, if I could.
Okay. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. Do you want me to go ahead and read number three, or just make your abstention noted?
Don't you have your minutes reflected, that was six, four, zero, and one abstention?
Okay.
Put that in your minutes.
All right.
And you'll adopt them the next go-round, and that was the business that was conducted on that issue.
All right.
Oh, I'll vote yes. I mean, is that what you're telling me?
We're good. Jimmy had to abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Late for the party.
Okay, then that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
All right. Mr. Kwiatowski.
No, no report today.
Okay, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to note on the agenda today, there was a grant application for the DCNR for McCallum Park Improvements as a phase two. And the, the grant is for the design, purchase, installation of playground and waterline. And I, I just wanted to just note that, you know, that, that work continues at McCallum Park, there was a master plan done in 2007, and it's great to see that we're coming out and, you know, being proactive and trying to look for grants to further develop the, the park and the area. I know the dog park that was developed last year was very well-received, and it continues to, to be well-used. Also, I attended a court authority meeting on the 22nd. As I reported last time, there's an engineering investigation being done in McAllister Place, they're hoping that a future development could use that property for, you know, a future project in the future, and hopefully that, that happens. Also, there is a, just an update, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago for the Ban Shelter, and they're receiving draft bid documents today, so hopefully that'll, that'll, the project will continue to, to happen, and the roof structure will come up as soon, as soon as they can build it. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report that the replacement of the executive director for the Erie Housing Authority is still in progress. The committee is still interviewing applicants for that position. What else do I have? Oh, the state auditor general's office in Harrisburg have decided to shut down the office, which was located in the Renaissance Center, as of yesterday. All the auditors are working at home, and I was the last one there, and the, for a while, I will be working out of my house. I think my phone number, you can get from the city clerk's office, but I will not be entertaining meetings at my house. Now, because there'll be some people who want to eat lunch. So that's that. I'm not sure what the long-range plan is for the state auditor general presence in Erie, but I'm sure I'll find out in time. But I'm still there, I'm still the regional director, and they can call, you can get the number from, well, let me give you the number, 455-5217. And be more than happy to assist you in that part of the business world. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning once again, everyone. I believe it's April 10th is our large item pickup there, and thank you. I would ask the neighbors and the citizens of Erie, if you would, try to base some of those rules that go with that. I think people thought this started a month ago, and all it does is make the city look a little messier, and we don't need that. If you would, try to do it 24 to 48 hours in advance of your nightly pickup, and that just, in all actuality respects the neighbors that are in your neighborhood, and it does keep the neighborhood cleaner till it is picked up. So I appreciate the cooperation on that. Once again, with the EMTA charter and the citizens that came here today, we appreciate them showing up, showing their concern, because we need them to come to our city council meetings, our county council meetings, to let people know we need to get this agreed on and passed. Everybody knows the city has passed a charter to renew it, the EMTA board has passed it, unfortunately, the county has not at this point. We did meet with the county once, as our three members here of council said we would, and at that time, they came with demands and more or less ultimatums, if we didn't go do things on their terms, they weren't going to play ball per se. At the end of the day, it still comes down to the citizens, and everybody here believes that with the majority, and I mean the vast majority of the ridership here in the city of Erie, 75, 80%, that things aren't broken, as a cliche has been said, we need to move forward, move past this, and get this handled. The city's passed it, the EMTA's passed it, we now have to ask the county if they would do their share. So I ask the same citizens that came here today, please go to those county council meetings and voice your concerns as well. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Witherspoon. The, for some reason, and I don't know why, county council forgets that the city of Erie is part of the total Erie County. If you want to break it down a little further, just say that the city of Erie is the largest township in the county. But equally as important, and I don't understand, we have three county council people that live in the city. That's three that live in the city. But we think when we say county, we always look at Mill Creek, Corey, Union City, Harbor Creek, Northeast. We don't think of the city as part of the county in our general conversation. Well, I'm going out to the county. Bingo, first thing we look, where, where in the county? I'm in the county. I pay county taxes. So you got $184,000 weight hanging over your head. Bully, threat. Some way, somehow, and I don't know how, the citizen is not going to lose their ridership wherever it's needed. Don't hold $184,000, for you and I and individuals, that's a lot of money. But for the county and the city, it's not a lot. Ridership is going to continue, and we will not be bullied into it, because they're not going to hurt, quote, county and city, they're going to hurt the folks that were here today and the thousands that were not here today. We will do our due diligence to make it happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Jones?
That would, I think some would consider that a drop-the-mic moment, right? You let it fly. Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a study session last week with the Erie School District, and we, as a body, council, passed a letter or penned and, and passed a resolution to send a letter supporting the fair funding formula for all of Pennsylvania schools and, and school districts, because it would benefit those that are, are the most wanting and the most challenged financially, and with the students that they have to teach and educate. And so I appreciate the body of council doing that and supporting that, as well as participating in the, the study session that we did have. Some of the information was new, but some was not new, but it was all necessary and important, and I think that we have a better grasp on some other options that hopefully we can work together as an administration council, as well as school district, as well as the county, as a municipality as well, because these are all of our same residents that we're talking about and our young people. I attended an event last Saturday evening at the Collegiate Academy Auditorium, a group of social work students from Mercyhurst University put together a documentary on the community around violence and how to cure and handle some of the violence that we have been dealing with in our community in the last several years. Very wonderful job. I don't remember all the young students who were involved, or all the students who were involved in that project. I do know one that I worked, connected with, Ms. Denise Hager did an amazing job with her peers, and they did a great job of capturing the opportunity, not just highlighting a problem, but highlight a problem and then capture opportunities to change and, and to move forward and to make our community better. So kudos to them and, and all the work that they're doing, and, and all the other groups that are doing work in the community to make it better. Again, we, we did have some pretty significant and lengthy conversation on process issues when it comes to city business, and I just wanted to, you know, again, highlight that because it's, it's important. Because at the end of the day, we do have to run things a little, I mean, this is not traditional business either, I get that, but I do think there are some things that we could eliminate confusion and eliminate distress or dis-ease around, and when we have some of these council meetings, if we know ahead of time where we have some things in place to make sure that all the checks and balances do come to us, because we're not full-time as far as being in the building, as far as council. But there are some people who are very well-able in the administration, Controller's Office, et cetera, coupled with our advice and involvement, to make sure that things are running smoothly, and we don't have these kind of hiccups that keep seeming to be happening. Next thing, I know we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago now, about maybe three weeks ago, with Kim Green and members of the Economic Development Department of the city, presenting to us the CDBG budget for this year. There are some things, and I think there are a few council members that are interested in making some adjustments on, and I know they've been, we've had some conversation around that and kind of pulling together. of pulling together before we just go to the administration or to the Economic Development Office with ideas loose, we want to kind of put something together to say, "Hey, this is what we're looking at", and so that's in the process, and we'll do that. I believe the next public hearing, or the next hearing, is the 11th of April. Is that current? I think it's the right date. Is that the right date? Be next?
Next Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday? I believe it, but it is coming up. They'll get it for me. I apologize. I thought it was the 11th in my head. Is it next Wednesday?
I think it's the 12th.
20, 21.
Oh, the 12th. The 12th?
I believe it's the 12th.
Okay. Okay, I probably should have had that in my head clear before. But there is another hearing before, so those that are interested in hearing and making a comment on the CDBG budget for this upcoming year, there's an opportunity to do that. Also, as Mr. Winarsky mentioned, it is extremely important, this issue of public transportation in our city, in our county as a whole, which again includes the city, not just coming to city council meetings, but going to county council meetings, not just writing city council members, but also writing county council members and everyone involved in the conversation. To Mr. Winarsky's point, our initial meeting wasn't much of a negotiation session, it was more, "Hey, this is what we want to do, we've already started our process, let's get in where you fit in, and if not, we're going to do what they are doing", which was pull certain levels of funding from the authority, from the county's perspective, or from the county's coffers. And so that's happening. Mr. Winarsky mentioned, makes the comment often, "It's not broken, so don't fix it." I agree, certain things are not broken, probably there's always room for improvement, but I think in addition to that, there are a lot of improvements that are being made to different areas of the county that have higher need, and there are adjustments that are happening with the current setup of the authority. So let's get down to business and let's handle what we need to do for the people who ride and utilize public transportation throughout Erie County. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the newest member to city council. I'm in my learning phase. It's only been a few months. And since I've been here, one thing that I have noticed is the communication between the administration and city council. That's key in order for us to serve our Erie city residents effectively. We really need to get on the ball and all be on the same page, because we can't serve the people from the city of Erie if we don't have all the information. You know, I mean, it's sad that when we get in our city council meetings, we're debating about different things that we should have already knew about before we even set up here, you know, and that takes up the citizens' time. But I think communication is the key. This is a learning process for me, and I want to thank each and every one of my council members. When I go to you, you answer my questions, I really appreciate that. But I know we're all on the same page as serving our Erie community the best that we can. And I just wanted to say that and thank everybody from the city controllers, to the clerk's office, to the solicitor's office. Thank all of you for welcoming me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Just a few things to report. The first thing I wanted, just to let, is housekeeping. Even odd rules for parking are in effect, so if you haven't gotten a ticket yet, you're lucky. And, but make sure that you follow the even odd parking rules in our central city neighborhoods and, because those are in effect. I've seen the street sweepers out. We did have an issue with one of the street sweepers didn't have any water in it, and the dust was blowing everywhere. I called it in, and I want to give credit to Public Works, it was handled immediately. As soon as I called it in, they took care of it and thanked them. I wanted to thank them for that. We also had a big announcement in the newspaper that there are going to be, if the variance is passed, 50 jobs coming to the east side on the old Hammer Mill site for a chemical plant that's expanding in Erie. They have a plant currently behind the Cathedral Prep and Villa Events Center. They want to expand, they do work with Hero BX, and we're very excited to have new industry coming into town, expanding in town, and reusing that industrial property. And from talking with, speaking with the vice president of the company, this, if it's successful, only the first phase of hopefully continued growth in this industry, and those new jobs are much needed on the east side, and we're excited for those prospects. Also, I wanted to thank MECA for the work that they do with, at Hagerty Park, working with people with disabilities, and, you know, the continued efforts to work with that group of people. And listening to the people today that came to the table, or to the microphone with disabilities, I think sometimes in the back and forth about EMTA, it's easy to forget, when you hear people talk about power and control, that this body here, from day one, and I've been at every meeting with our people on city council, for us, it's always been about the people of the city of Erie. And advocating for the people of the city of Erie and making sure that the city residents are taken care of, period, point-blank. And I will tell you this, to the people that came up and said, "Don't close our bus service down", this body is committed to keeping buses running for our residents. Whether we have to go over to the courthouse and file an injunction, we'll march over there and do it. Buses will run for our people. You have our commitment to that. And just a few other things to report. The D.C. and R. grant that Councilman Brennan talked about, we're applying for a playground over there as part of that master plan. We're looking to get some matching funds to supplement that. I know that the city's providing matching funds through in-kind services of our employees working on that project. We have a dog park now, we're looking for a human park, and so that's, that'll be exciting. Hopefully, that application comes through and we get that funding. And I wanted to finally just thank Mr. Jones for his efforts with the Erie School District, and the study session that we had was very informative. But more importantly, the letter that we sent to the governor and the leadership of both the House and Senate of both parties. When you're, when you hear the debates in Harrisburg, and I, as a politico, I read a lot of those things, politicspa.com, and you sometimes think, "Do they have sesquahana fever, or is something different in the water down there that makes them forget who they represent?". And I see a theme today, it's the least among us, be it the citizens who can't access the taxis and can't access the Uber and depend on the bus service, be it the children who don't have a vote, so they need our voice. And I want to thank Mr. Jones for being that voice for those kids and for our families here in Erie. At the end of the day, the work that we do here on council is about people, and it's about you. So we want to thank you for the opportunity to serve us, and we'll continue that fight for you wherever it takes us. That's all I have. Do you want to say, Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like MECA and Voices for Independence to consider challenging members of council to spend the day, not the entire day, but part of the day, provide wheelchairs and let us cross Ninth Street, Tenth Street, Twelfth Street, say up to Griswold Plaza, and then back. And then we will know exactly how it feels, because when you, there's about 20 seconds, 25 seconds to cross the street, and if you start out at 15 crossing in a wheelchair, and the little guy is there, and then all of a sudden, the stop hand is there, that's a little fearful. So, I mean, do this when the weather is good and we get to know how their challenges are. And just want to throw that out, and maybe we can do it, maybe not, but it's a challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Ms. Stan Kevich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone received a letter from myself in my office indicating that we have filed all the necessary reports for the state pensions as required by the state, well beyond the due date, which was March 31st. So it got submitted early, and copy is in the clerk's office, and there'll be a copy in my office if anybody wants to take a look at them. If anybody has any questions, they can contact me. And I just want to thank the girls in my office for their hard work in getting these reports together in a timely manner and getting them filed. And like I said, if anybody has questions, just let me know.
Thank you. Administration, Ms. Beck?
Good morning. I do have confirmation that the next CDBG hearing is Tuesday, April 12th, at 10:00 a.m. Also, wanted to comment that Mayor Sinan and I had the opportunity to attend Vietnam War Commemoration Ceremony that took place at Memorial Park last Tuesday, the 29th. It was hosted by the Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 435, the Erie VA Medical Center, and the Erie Vet Center. It's part of a national initiative to thank our Vietnam veterans for their service. It's part of the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. So it was a lovely ceremony, it was a cold and brisk, beautiful day out in Memorial Park, but they did a great job and was certainly well-deserved. Want to comment on the Sea Wolves extension, contract extension. Sea Wolves ownership was able to sign, get an extended contract with Jerrit Park. The Sea Wolves are also tasked with the opportunity to sell the naming rights to the Jerrit Park, so I want to thank the family of, the Oat family. There will always be a green space there in his name and in his honor, but they do have the opportunity to go out and sell nationally, hopefully, the naming rights to our field, which will certainly help maintain baseball, such a great family pastime here in Erie for years to come. And lastly, congratulations to the impending retirement of Fire Chief Tony Pol, and congratulations on the promotions of Chief Fire Inspector Guy Santone and John Wodomski, who'll be coming up through the ranks in their prospective positions, and thank everyone for their service. Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. President? Oh. Busy one today. Mr. Jones and then Mr. Kwiatowski.
We had a little, I forgot, when I was giving my five-minutes presentation. We are going to have a finance meeting. Sean is here, we're going to go through our audit, so there was a little confusion in caucus, but I think the clarity is here. The man's in the building, and Elvis has not left the building. But, so we are going to do that immediately after this session.
Thank you. And Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yeah, a quick comment to Jill, on behalf of the Vietnam veterans. I couldn't make it that day, I was out of town, but they expressed their thankfulness for the mayor's office, Dave Rocco, Parks Department for the use of that, yeah, the band shelter, and they appreciate it, they just wanted to thank the city. And thank the mayor, too. Let me see him.
Thank you, and with that, this, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 10:50?
Anything else?
It was.
Yes. Yes.
Anything else?
I heard the gap. I respect the gap.
We're looking for, only, only one more interruption to the...